Let me know, are we on?
Yes.
Okay. All right, welcome, folks, in Cohasset. I'm Kevin McCarthy, I'm Chair of the Cohasset Board of Selectmen, and this meeting is being called as an emergency meeting pursuant to provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20B. I'd like to call a roll call, please, start with Diane.
Diane Kennedy here.
Paul Schubert here.
Kevin McCarthy here.
Carrie Thompson here.
Jack Creighton here.
Okay, I'd like to do a prejudicial allegiance to those who he had with a flag anywhere. Put yours up if you could, Chief, yep. To the chief's flag right there. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, we're here, folks, and we're going to move the meeting right along because, and as you can see, we've spaced as we should be in all meetings that are done in town. We encourage everybody to do that, the kind of spacing that we're doing now. Everybody's six feet apart. And we're going to move this meeting along because we're here under the conditions of the coronavirus emergency, and we're going to cover the business that we need to do and then be done with it for today. And the main purpose is to proclaim a declaration of emergency. So, does anybody want to comment on the implications of what the declaration of emergency does essentially? Glenn?
There are no implications, there are all files. By way of background, it's based on the Chapter 639 Acts of 1950, which basically was a Cold War thing, giving government the authority to respond to any sort of disaster or attack. That's been modernized somewhat, and in 1965 it was amended to create what's now called Massachusetts Emergency Management Agency. Declaration is an administrative tool that allows municipal government access to state and federal resources to better serve the community if disasters, emergencies, and crisis events develop. It allows us to more quickly utilize and coordinate municipal services, equipment, supplies, and facilities. Declaration that I'm asking to be declared today allows us to request help and supplies and materials through MIMA, Mass Emergency Management Agency, who in turn requests from FEMA. Without the declaration, we're not eligible to receive that help and those goods or whatever it is coming down from FEMA. It also allows us to access what's called the statewide statewide mutual aid agreement, which we signed a number of years ago, like all cities and towns in Massachusetts. Cohasset is a small population, and most times when there's regional disasters or situations like we're having now, they're paratized by population. So we're already way down the list when we're looking for things. And if we don't have a declaration in MIMA's hands, we can't even get on the list when we request help or any sort of aid. On the local level, it just gives the Incident Command Group, which is being led by Chief Sylvia now, he's our incident commander, gives him the authority to order and direct any agency or anything that needs to be done without delaying and without being held up by regulations. So it's vitally important, and I encourage you to make declaration this morning.
Okay. Any further comments anybody has to make before we deliberate? Any of the chiefs or anything? Chris?
We're at a point now where it's something that we need to do, that's the reason we've accelerated it up. Things have changed even since last night. So we're at a point now where we just need to get this in place, and we need to move forward, continue to move forward to protect the public health and safety.
Okay. Okay, any other input? If not, we'll deliberate in the board. Any board members have any comments?
I'm in favor of it.
Okay, any other comments?
It seems necessary and prudent at this point, so.
Okay, any other comments?
Clearly needs to be done.
Okay. Okay, that being the case then, why don't we and you all have it in front of you, so you know what the contents are. So why don't we have a what I'll do is I'll read it, then we'll take a motion, okay? So everybody knows what's being done. This is the declaration. It's Town of Cohasset Board of Selectmen Declaration of Emergency. Whereas the worldwide outbreak of COVID-19 and the effects of its extreme risk of person-to-person transmission throughout the United States and the Commonwealth significantly affect the life and health of our people as well as the economy, and is a disaster that impacts the health, security, and safety of the public. And whereas the governor of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts has issued a declaration of emergency on March 10, 2020, and determined that the immediate public auction action is needed to prevent, minimize, or mitigate damage to public health, safety, or general welfare of the people of Commonwealth and/or property which may otherwise result from the above described emergency. And whereas the governor of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts has recommended that a state of emergency be declared in local communities, and whereas the people of the community of Cohasset should be able to depend upon guidance from their chief municipal officials. Now, wherefore we, the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Cohasset, Massachusetts hereby declare that immediately and effective as of the 16th of March 2020, a state of emergency is declared to exist in Cohasset. This declaration of emergency shall remain in effect until notice is given pursuant to our judgment that the state of emergency no longer exists, dated March 16, 2020. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion, we approve the declaration of
It's just read.
Issuing it.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Roll call vote.
Okay, we'll do a roll call vote on this emergency declaration. Start with Diane.
Diane Kennedy, aye.
Paul Schubert, aye.
Kevin McCarthy, aye.
Carrie Thompson, aye.
Jack Creighton, aye.
Okay, the roll call shows a unanimous vote, Tracy. With that done, this has been passed. We need one signed copy.
I'd rather have two if we could.
Two signed copies, can I have yours, please? Do you have your copy? Okay, why don't we just keep them right here, right here, folks? If you would, why don't we get it done? Because this is the important function. If everybody could, one by one, come up and just sign this here. I want you to start with you first, Carrie. And Jack. Open camera. Open camera. Okay, Chris, would you give this to you? I'm going to give the two signed declarations to our town manager for proper administration, okay? Okay, with that done, we want to discuss just a few actions that we may want to take immediately. And the first one will be, we'll review the vote. All the public events that are set to occur, the proposal here is that we cancel all event permits that have been issued through April 30, 2020.
If I may, Mr. Chairman.
And do we have a comment? Yes.
So I did speak with Council Durentis this morning, and since this agenda was even posted, the governor's come out with new directives. So basically, no events of any kind with any group of more than 25 people are allowed anywhere in the state. Restaurants have been closed and bars to take out only. So at this point, effectively, I think the action is just we're just going to implement the governor's directives. Because there's nothing that we, that you folks are and this is really just the permits that you issue for, you know, big group activities. None of them are that small. You know, basically, we're talking about the road race, which has been canceled effectively anyway. That was April 5. We have Earth Day on April 25, which we might be able to revisit, by the way, but again, we'll get to that as we come to it. If we can do that in a way that keeps people from really interacting too much, it may not be a bad public activity for people to get out and help clean up the community. And that's a month away, so we'll
What event is that?
It's Earth Day.
Earth Day, okay.
But no, so, and then the next events, and there's a I believe there's an MS walk that was scheduled. There was a bike ride that day, that's going to be postponed as well. That has to be, that's more than 25 people on the bikes. The next events don't come until early May, and that's a Little League opening parade and a couple of, and an MS walk. I believe Little League is already the latest opening from what I've been reading. So at this point, I don't think we're going to have to take action on those, though I do think we'll revisit them in the next couple of weeks and just see where we stand, with an understanding that anything in May may end up getting kicked back, too.
Okay, so in sum, the governor has given specific directions relative to what needs to be canceled. Those essentially have the effect of law. We don't need to do anything further, and they'll be done. Is that correct?
Yeah, I think at this point, that's, I think that's fair.
Okay, so that's decided, then we'll do. Would you, in your daily update today to the community, outline that so that that can be posted publicly?
The next point, the public meetings, effectively, all public meetings are, the only thing that's the only meetings that need to take place are essential meetings. And exactly what that means, I guess we'll have to see. There might be some items in the pipeline that require some activity, some permit filed or something. We're going to work today to figure out what's in right, as of today, we don't have to accept any new filings for anything. So effectively, all the approval processes for non, you know, building permits and planning board activities, those are all frozen, because we're not taking anything new in. We have to assess today what's in the process and what can be delayed. The first act we'll do is attempt to have everyone just sign off, any applicant, and just recognize that nothing's going to happen in the short term, so we're just mutually all agree it's going to be deferred. If for some reason we can't get that to happen, we'll try to set up an online meeting with the appropriate board. And again, I think we're only talking about maybe the planning board or the zoning board, or something like that, or the Conservation Commission, or something like that may be pending, because we don't want to have a constructive approval. The, we'll know better in the next couple of days what we have to do with that. There's action at the state level. There's a proposal to freeze everything in place right now. It hasn't gone into effect yet. We expect it will by the end of the week, but we're just acting in a, you know, with all due caution to make sure that nothing's going to slip through cracks anywhere.
Okay, so, do we need to take action on that, or is that done by law?
Yeah, I think effectively, the, all, the board can declare that no, no non-essential meeting should take place for, you know, the next 30 days.
Why don't we have a motion, just to be safe? The one thing I want, yeah, I want to be clear, too, is if someone makes the motion, no non-essential meeting be, occur until the emergency declaration is over. And that includes all committee and board meetings, town committee and board meetings, to make sure the motion says that, so that they know that. Could he have that motion? Excuse me, yes.
Very quick point, just so you're aware, starting the end of last week, we were concerned about how we were going to keep all boards informed of exactly what was going on on a day-to-day basis. And last Friday, we entered into agreement with Zoom as one of the platforms that we were going to use. So when you make that motion, I would suggest that the idea may be, that the motion is that no meetings will happen face-to-face, and as we develop our programming, we may be able to start to roll out meetings that people can attend. But we don't know what that means. There's new guidance from the governor as of last night. So I would just ask that whatever motion you make, you allow us that flexibility, that as we move forward and technology allows, that we could have meetings.
Right. I was going to cover that separately. So what we could do is have a motion where there'll be no face-to-face. And then after that motion's passed, then we'll then we'll, we'll come to agreement that the exception to that will be remote motions as feasible as we produce it. Diane?
I'm willing to make a motion. I had a question, but I'll follow up. It was based on what you just said about the
So you want to make the original motion?
Happy to do that.
Go ahead, yeah.
My move that no non-essential town government meetings will take place face-to-face or in person until the declaration, emergency declaration is removed. This includes all town and committee, all town boards and committees.
Second. Any further discussion? Do a roll call vote on that. Diane?
Diane Kennedy, aye.
Paul Schubert, aye.
Kevin McCarthy, aye.
Carrie Thompson, aye.
Jack Creighton, aye.
That's unanimous, Tracy. Now, now let's address the fact that we, of what the chief was mentioning relative to meetings will be allowed. Well, why don't I say it this way, because it's the way I understand what we're doing right now, and this is important, developing platforms whereby non-face-to-face committee and board meetings can be done. And what we want to do is have Chris, his organization, work with all due haste, but not take, not so fast that it doesn't get done right the first time. Establish a platform and directions and procedures that can be promulgated out to the committees and boards as to how they can meet and how to use the technology. That's what we want to ask, you know, Chris to do. I don't know if we need a motion to that, but once that's done and that's promulgated, then those kinds of remote meetings can occur. I don't know how, whether we want to put that in a motion up, but why don't you do Chris first, then Paul, then Diane?
The governor issued directives last week that kind of allows that. Of course, there's no specifics on what you do. It's, you need to, you know, come up with an online platform and include the public, and if there's no way to include the public, you have to record the entire meeting and then make it available. So, but you also have to give people access who have to appear in front of the board. So having a meeting is one thing when we're talking with each other. Having another meeting with public participation is another. And then inviting a third party to present an application is something we haven't figured out how we're going to make pull off, particularly where you have, so I think we will, we're working on the first so we can have, you know, regular, at least, board updates, and we can talk to folks. And that, we hopefully will have something, if not this week, but by next. And then we'll continue to roll out with more access as we can figure out how to load these platforms. One of the challenges is that everyone's looking at the same things we are. So the question is, will these platforms be able to withstand the pressure that's being put on them? And we will figure that out. So that said, that's our directive, is to find these options so that we can all communicate and stay in touch with each other to allow government to continue to function.
Paul?
Yeah, I was saying, the governor probably is, the recommendations are to strive towards online meetings as best as possible and pursue methods that are appropriate for that. In addition to where there's emergencies that are necessary, there may be need for emergency meetings for particular onsite locations. So I think that probably would cover it.
Diane?
Just, it's a partial question that I don't think there's an answer to, which is just, I mean, I believe that any deliberative meeting obviously would still have to follow the 48-hour posting notice. Is that correct?
Well, yeah, a routine meeting would still have to be posted in advance. Emergencies like this one, you wouldn't.
Correct.
Routine meetings would still have to be posted, and you'd have to explain how to access them. And if you couldn't, see, this is the area that we don't know yet. The provision of the governor's order says if you don't, you have to record the whole thing and make it available to the public. Okay.
Like in transcript form the next day.
Right, right. No, not necessarily a transcript, I mean, but you have to then record. We record Selectmen's meetings, 143 TV does. I don't know how you record an online meeting. I mean, I mean, you can. So we have to go through the technology of that. And then, you know, again, the goal, though, is to you want the public to be able to access things. You don't want to, you know, even if you have a meeting and then release it later, it's not the same thing. So until we have regular, robust public action, most, most things we do, as important as they are, can be deferred. I mean, it, you know, and we will do that. And we'll talk about government services in just a second. So, but we do want to make sure boards and committees are kept informed, everyone understands what's going on. And we will try to find platforms at least to do those things, so boards can meet and at least, you know, talk and communicate. And as soon as we can find a way that we can, you know, engage the public and allow public input and applicant input, even just for deliberation for town meeting warrant articles, you need to have people talking, we'll let you know. So that's, literally, we're going to be going back to Town Hall this morning and working on that.
I know some other towns are considering using Facebook Live just because it can be broadcast live and then reposted for people to watch, so that is one option that we maybe should consider. I know a lot of the town is on Facebook, but not everyone, but it could be a platform.
It's definitely one we're looking at, Carrie, most certainly for bringing government to people like in library and rec and elder affairs, programming, so people can stay engaged. So we're most, because that's a platform that's fairly easy to make work. So we, everything's on the table, so.
I think one of the things we should be considering is using our television station 143. We also, by the way, need to get that funded. Too, many people do not understand or use social media, especially our seniors, and our seniors are at great risk of isolation because of this emergency to begin with. The other concern that we should be very careful of as a, as town government, is that under the guise of all the things that we need to do, some very crucial issues might kind of get done without full public knowledge. So I think, and I don't know what the answer is, but I think we won't get to the answer until we've thought that we want to be very careful with some crucial issues that are, have impacts town-wide, that we make an extra effort to make sure everybody knows about that. And I think it's going to take more than one or two communication platforms.
Okay. Anything else? Okay. Next item then would be, discuss contact points for public services. Chris, you wanted to talk on that?
So effective today, all of our public buildings are closed, all of our municipal buildings are closed. The schools are closed, elder affairs is closed to the public, library, rec, Town Hall. Police and Fire, you know, are open for service, but that, you know, the public should not be coming into them. And the same thing with Public Works. That's going to be functional. The RTF will continue to function. Obviously, we ask people to keep that same distancing rule and to follow the rules. You've still got to use your blue bags, you've still got to follow those rules, okay? Please don't make people chase you. Please don't think this is an opportunity to get, you know, to break the rules. We got to be rule followers now, more than ever. And be careful with stuff, right? Please. So that, we are going to, our online platforms are ramping up. We've now pushed the all-facility stickers, which are expiring. We're going to give people a little grace period here because of the reality we're in. That said, it can all be done online. So if you need to renew your all-facility stickers, go online, follow the instructions. You can actually print stuff out and drop it in the silver box, and we'll process paperwork if that's what you need to drop off, or you can scan it and send it in. We're going to decouple that from direct contact. And a lot of other functions, dog licensing, a lot of other things can be done online. Find yourself in a place where you can't do that, either send an email to the direct office or call. Call, and we will stop people answering phones, and we can arrange, as needed, secure face-to-face. If there's some kind of copy of some, you know, birth certificate or something you need to get, we can work to get that. So, but that's essential business only, something you might need for, you know, some kind of very important item. And again, we're also going to be doing emergency safety inspections. We're still kind of our emergency inspectors, but routine stuff is kind of, it's going to slow down right now. So we just have, we have to expect that that's the case. Our staff are people, too, and they have families, and they need to be safe. We're trying to figure out ways to make sure that we keep our our elder affairs supported. We're working with staff to make sure that we're supporting seniors at home to follow up on one of the things that Selectman Creighton just pointed out. We are going to try to push out regular programming at regular times. For example, on 143, we're hoping to put out, you know, the senior yoga and stretches strength classes in the morning on 143 at the time they would normally take place. So seniors can turn it on and do it from home. And we're going to try to do some more of those things. And we'll try Facebook Live and others with other audiences that might be more amenable to those. So we're going to try to normalize things as much as you can in a circumstance like this. I know that, I've talked to Don and his team. He's going to try to grab some of the returning students and figure out who we can draft into service to allow us to make 143 more robust as we can. And at the same time, you know, Police and Fire operating normally and our Public Works staff, we're going to continue to, you know, we need to have them operate, too. That said, social distancing, all this stuff still remains in place, you know. Please, don't come to Town Hall and bang on the door and expect us to let you in, because we can't. And if there's an emergency, call 911. I mean, those things haven't changed. We will do our best to respond, and we will make things happen. We'll process permits as we can. But most routine stuff is going to slow down. It just is. Now, as I say that, one of the most important things we need to do is engage on the public side. There's people who want to volunteer, there's people who want to help out. So what we're going to do, and I've talked to Glenn about this, we have a pretty robust committee application form online. It's worked nicely. Over the next day or so, we'll kind of tweak that up to add a volunteer application page. So people will go, can go on our website, fill out a form, tell us what you can do, what you know about, what your background is. And then we'll be able to distribute that across to elder affairs and to emergency management and say, hey, we have volunteer over here who can do this or this, and we'll see if we can't help plug people in. That said, it's a different kind of world, you know. We have to do this in a very deliberative way. But we're going to try to, you know, there's a great energy in this town, there's great talent in this town. We want to help channel it. I think for some period of time, it's going to be a little slow, because it just is. We have to be very careful about how we do these things, too. We don't want to rush in, right, and start causing more trouble, unfortunately, or unintended consequences. That said, we want, we want people to know that we want them to engage, and we want to help. You know, there might be, you know, again, if you have a neighbor, you know, and then the grass starts to grow, you know, you can, if you want to help cut their lawn, you know, that's, I mean, let them know what you're doing. You know, if you see, if you haven't seen an older neighbor for a little while, you might want to call us and make sure that, you know, we check in. We do check in with folks on a regular basis now. Not just the people who are normally, you know, frail and elderly, but, you know, we've asked our staff to just plug into regular attendees. Just call them regularly, how we doing? And if you have networks like that, please continue to do that. Have people reach out to your neighbors and, you know, people still wave. It's okay to wave. You got to have a conversation across the street or across a fence. And, you know, we want to just keep watching out for folks. So let's keep, let's keep doing that. You know, if somebody left their garbage, you know, grand waste came and the garbage is rolling, you know, it's okay to help pick it up and put it on someone's, you know, front lawn or on their side yard. That said, routine stuff, you know, normally in a such circumstance, we have a snow day, we open up, and people come to rec, and people come to library. I'm afraid we can't do those things right now. We can still borrow books, there's a great ebook platform. So I know the library staff is eager to help people engage on the electronic platforms. There's Libby and, oh geez, I'm forgetting the other one. There's two, there's at least two platforms you can sign up for. There's, there's two, there's at least two platforms you can sign up for, ebooks, movies, there's all kinds of stuff available through the library system, so it's out there. I know the schools are working to figure out what they can do as well, and, and I'm hoping that in the next week or so, they'll have figured out some other options. And, and if anyone has any thoughts, you know, you know, you know, again, we're not going to be able to turn around emails right away, but, you know, if you have questions or thoughts, please just communicate them. We're going to continue to communicate on a daily basis with updates, and we'll do more, you know, we'll do more TV and things like that as, as we can make things relevant for folks.
Okay. All right. Anything else on the board? Jack?
Yeah. One of the things in communications, which I alluded to just a second or so ago, is 143, I believe there's some kind of funding logjam, which is keeping the money from Verizon, from flowing to 143 and they may be, and I have my information is, is not complete, I just found out about it. So Chris, is there funding for 143 from Verizon and is it being flowing to 143 or is there a logjam?
So it's actually in the warrant, so, so the, the state has required that the accounting for that change. So it's actually article, I think the board voted to recommend it the other night. So it, it, we have to change our accounting practice, so the, the, the money's been collected and it's sitting there, so pending town meeting action, we were going to release the whole year's worth and then be able to do it ongoing.
Is there any way to facilitate?
All right, we're going to find out. As of this point, we weren't, because we had to adopt this local law, and, and they have funds, they, they do have funds they can tap. We're going to see, thank you for raising that, we're going to see if there's some workaround at, at this point.
At this point, under the emergency declaration, does this board have the ability to release those funds? And Mr. Chairman, you might address that.
I, I will tell you that if we can, pursuant to, this is a state law, this is not a local ordinance, so we will follow up on it, and it, it, 143 is considered a part of our emergency network, so obviously, i- i- if we can, if, if we can release any funds, which we will, I will ask Don to look into more today, we will do that.
Okay, yeah. Irrespective of the funding issue, which I know you're aware of and you'll take care of, 143 should be fully operational during this whole thing, there must be any kind of, you know, don't let whatever this funding issue is impede the operations of 143 at all, if anything, they should be fully maximized, this support to them, okay? That's, that was.
It's not going to be a problem.
No, I understand, okay, that's fine. Diane?
So the, the move that we took to postpone all of, of meetings necessarily changes the timeline for town meeting. And I know that there's legislation pending at the state to, to deal with that, but at this point, I mean, is it safe to say that we're not going to have town meeting on May 4th? Because we would need to have the warrant buttoned up in, in people's hands three weeks ahead of time, et cetera, et cetera.
So the way, so the way the, I was actually talking to council about that today too. So technically, since you haven't signed the warrant, you haven't locked anything in place yet, at least that's what he said. The state also is, is changing the rules to allow a moderator to, to move the meeting 30 days just by act, and I actually have an email out to Dan as well to find out, just to keep it plugged in. While I wouldn't say it's guaranteed we're going to delay, I, I say that we're going to start making plans, I'm going to have to delay town meeting. The, the, it, basically the warrant has to be pursuant to the bylaws in people's hands a week ahead of time, and it takes time to print that, and then we have to finish deliberations, which is the reason we usually leave a month. And then we want to make sure everyone understands it, right? The point is that we spend time after it's all buttoned up, explaining everything that's happened and everything that's in there, so when people get to town meeting floor, they understand it. So it's likely we're, we're, that'll end up being pushed a bit, whether it's a week or a month, at this point, I really can't say. Part of it is going to depend on what's happening at the world at large and, and the world around us. So if this, if, if all the social distancing work slows the virus transmission, we can move more quickly. That said, it's something we're looking at, and I, I would say at this point, it's likely that we'll end up having to push the date.
I think needless to say, and I'd probably speak for the board, that we, we want your top priority and the top priority of the government to be health and safety of the community throughout, until this emergency declaration is declared over. So that, that's really where we want your absolute focus, because I know already you're getting various questions about this, that, but the standard answer, as far as we're concerned, can pretty much be that you and the entire organization of the municipality is focused on public safety and, and health, and that's all you need to be, the other stuff, you know, that can be your standard answer, as far as we're concerned. Once the declaration is over, then we, these other things will flow. Paul?
Diane?
No, it's all right.
Diane? Who's that? Anybody else? Anything else, around municipal leaders, would like to say anything?
Just, just, Chief. Chairman, as far as the police department goes, we're going to hold off on doing fingerprints for people, firearms licensing, some of the different, you know, vendors licenses, that's all going to be put off, we're just going to delay it, you know, probably for 30 days at this point. If you have a license that's expiring, you can, you can send an email to the department, there's a, there's an email for the licensing officer on our website, and we'll make note of it that you, you did, you know, make a good faith attempt. And we just ask that everybody be patient, we're in a, you know, uncharted territory here, so we might not get back to you as quickly as we usually would, but everybody's very busy, and we just ask for people to give us that leeway.
Thank you, thank you, Chief. Uh, excuse me, yeah.
I was just facetious. Does that mean no traffic tickets will be issued?
I can't promise anything.
Okay, Chief.
Just very, very quickly, from an incident command standpoint, obviously, the governor came on last night, and he's trying to explain to everybody that very simply, this is not a three-week vacation. We have an opportunity here to flatten the curve, in quotes, flatten the curve, so that this crisis does not overwhelm the healthcare system. So our message to everybody in town is, everybody can do their part, and it's just as simple as follow the guidance that you're receiving about social distancing. The board, and I appreciate your efforts this morning to conduct a meeting and make sure that everybody is following those guidelines. This is going to be our chance to slow down the freight train that is coming, and it is coming, you know? It's just what it is, just come to that reality. That being said, everybody in town needs to know that we're working on this on a daily basis, we are trying to keep everybody informed, we are doing the best that we can in that regard. If they don't get the information immediately, if it takes 24 hours, please understand that it's not that we're trying to keep anyone in the dark, but it just takes time for us to get everything together and get it out to the public. And the last point I make is that we do put out a daily message to everyone. If we're, if we're missing something in our messaging that somebody wants to see, then they need to notify us. And there are so many avenues that they can do that, and, you know, through which you're, they're elected officials, through Chris's office, through, you know, if it's a police or fire department specific item, please reach out to us. But understand that we are working on this 24/7, and I don't mean to be cavalier about that. This is what it is, we are working this every single waking hour that every one of us has. So I just wanted to get that out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman, can I just mirror that as well? So from, from South Shore Hospital and from the general healthcare system, what the chief said is absolutely correct. The volume that is coming into the hospitals will rise, where social distancing is a real effective means. It is a individual quarantine, as you might say. The quarantine does work in clear cases where you can be able to do it, but the social distancing, this is not a snow day, this is not a week off because of a blizzard. It is, there are no playdates, there are no dinner parties, there are no outside of your own house. Keep everyone off interaction with anyone else, six feet. We need to protect the EMS, we need to protect the police, the fire, the doctors, the nurses, the, the orderlies, the transport people that are going to be in the hospitals, that will be probably stressed to a, a limit which we hope to control. If you can limit attrition of the staff, many of the staff may not be necessarily ill, but they will be taken offline and quarantined. If that occurs to a large level, we will be short-staffed, both from the fire, the police, EMS, transport, hospitals, doctors, nurses. So do not have playdates, do not have any interaction, give us time to just push down the curve. This virus is able to be stopped, there's no animal vector in, in the United States that's going to carry it, it's human to human, person to person. So if you can break the chain, give it long enough so that the overall infectivity speed slows, we can do it. And that's the goal of all of these reasons why there are such draconian measures to limit it. We do not have a vaccine, we do not have a treatment, but we have mitigation efforts. Limit the handshakes, limit the distance, as you can see here, we're six feet apart. If you have a, a doctor, a nurse, or someone who is in a transport, a police, a fire, just give six feet. Keep that in mind. So if we mitigate the overall numbers, it will clearly limit the spread, and that will limit the spread to the older population that are clearly at risk. That's all. Thanks.
Thank you. Carrie?
Thank you, Dr. Schubert, to follow up on that. If there's anything any of us in town can be doing besides social distancing, besides the quarantine measures, to help our first responders, to help our doctors and nurses in town, to help all of your families, please let us know. Obviously, we need to be safe and vigilant with our interactions with each other, but a lot of people in town are eager to help and willing and have resources to help, so as this changes by the hour and by the day, let us know how those of us can be helping all of you that are on the front lines.
Thank you. Chris, Diane, you have something?
Yeah, but you can.
No, go ahead.
I just wanted to say that on top of this, and I hate to make that worse, but one of the things we've been talking about all year is addiction, and social isolation is probably the largest mental health problem and contributor to some of the mental health issues we have. So I implore all of you to, to keep that front of mind as well, because we need to find whatever way it is, and, you know, I work for an arts organization, we're dropping, you know, music videos and, and performance videos on a daily basis. It's not perfect, and it's, but, but this is my biggest fear in terms of, once we get over the hump and flatten the curve, that we're going to be dealing with some, some isolation casualties that, you know, to me is, is, is something I think about every minute of every day. So thank you all for all your work.
Good. Chris, I just want to make sure it's clear to the public as well as the board, the way we're structured, this, and this has been declared an emergency incident and so forth, or do you want to elaborate on, just so the public knows what, what the structure is here, that, or the event that's being, isn't this considered, if we set up a team, there's an emergency?
Yeah, we, we, I can speak to that, Mr. Chairman. The declaration was to, you know, all, for all intents and purposes, was to cut red tape, so that we can get things done that we need to get done as quickly as possible for the public, just so they, they know that we have a working group that consists of public safety, public health, the Town Hall, IT, and, and others, the schools. Pat Sullivan has been a, has been a phenomenal resource for all of us. We're all working together day to day, and that's why I say we have an eight o'clock working phone call every single morning. The phone calls started at about a half an hour, the yesterday's was an hour and a half. We have so many things, and that was before the events of yesterday, where we learned from the federal government that there's going to be new CDC guidelines that are going to come out today, and that they're going to increase testing. The increased testing piece is phenomenal, but what does it mean to us as first responders? It means we're going to have more and more confirmed cases within the town of Cohasset, which again, is going to create somewhat, some issues for all of us as we try to work through this. So we're going to be, the police officers, the firefighters, the guy, the, the folks that have to go out as first responders are, are at risk, and what we ask the public on that regard is that if they are, and they've confirmed or they're in quarantine, and we've put out what the differences are, isolation because you've been confirmed, or quarantine because you've been in contact with somebody that's been confirmed, that if you call for emergency services, one of the very first things you tell people is exactly that, so that the first responders can take the appropriate steps to protect themselves so we can keep them online. One of our biggest concerns is that we start to lose our employees, because not so much that they get sick, but because of the fact that they become exposed and have to go into quarantine. We both run very small departments, we cannot afford to have people out for 14 days. It's one of those things that we're working on day to day with our, with our troops to make sure that they understand what, what they're up against. The other piece is very simply, what we talked about was the working group. The working group is exactly that. Things are changing on us so quickly that we don't even know. I did not see the governor coming out yesterday and informing us that every single bar and restaurant was going to be closed. I did not see him say that he was going to extend the school closure to April 7th. We didn't see this stuff coming. So as an example, we have so much work to get done today because of yesterday's events, and that's what's happened every 24 hours. This, every 24 hours, the game has changed. And that's why we ask people, everyone, and Carrie, when you made the comment about what can people do, what can they do socially distanced? Number one, that is the number one thing that they can do. Number two, Chris mentioned it earlier, Chris and Glenn are working on, in a volunteer pool. Well, as we move forward, we'll be looking not just for, for people to help deliver food, but people that might have expertise that we might need, such as how do we get stuff out to the public? How do we make sure that people aren't isolated? How do we get those messages out? You know, how do we help 143? Or the second channel that we also have, which is the educational channel through the schools. So that's the biggest things that we're trying to get out. We are working on this every single day. If you have comments, questions, whatever, please use the avenues that we've mentioned, and please, deal with facts, not Facebook, okay? It's really that simple. I have a little, little thing that popped up, and it said, be like Bob, okay? Believe the science, not the rumors, not the fear, okay? So, you know, it's kind of a cartoon, but really it is that way. Become educated. Look at the W, you know, the DPH, Mass Department of Public Health, look at the CDC, accept the fact that this is coming, and there is guidance on how we can protect everyone, but most importantly, our most at-risk folks. So everybody can do their part by just social distancing. I mean, it, it really is that, it's that simple. So those are, that's kind of my, I get a little long-winded sometimes, but I'm passionate about what we're doing.
Mr. Chairman?
Thank you very much. Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just on organization, so Homeland Security through FEMA has required a number of years ago, that every government organization and tribal organizations have, adopt and train what's called the Incident Command System, which is a standardized incident command throughout all levels of government, countrywide. We have that, we have it in place, there are a number of different key people in that organization. Chief Sylvia is the incident commander for this incident in Cohasset, and the table fills in with lots of other town officials as we, as he says we've been working on.
Thank you. Okay. Anything else, Chief?
One more thing, Mr. Chairman. Chief Sylvia reminded me of something when we was talking. She was talking about testing sites, you know, the federal government has partnered with private entities, and we have to figure out what that means to us. They mentioned CVS, they mentioned Walgreens, and they mentioned Quest. We have all three of those in town here, so it, it is possible that we may have testing sites here, so that's something that's shaking out, we'll keep the public informed about that.
Good.
We just, we're trying to get our, get our heads around that.
I think as, as much as you can do to get testing in Cohasset, we strongly would like to have you do, I'm speaking for the board. So we'd like you to get that as much as you can, and there's plenty of spots. I think the music circus might be another, that's a huge parking lot right there. But anywhere you think you need, but that would be a really great thing, if you could get testing in town here.
Okay. And just the, the last thing, not to be all gloom and doom, we're, we're going to try to post a lot of photos of what's going on around town, and maybe some short videos of the officers and the cruisers and stuff like that, just to lighten things up a little bit. Chris has directed us to do what we can to, you know, bring the, bring the outside to the, to the inside.
Inside, right. Yeah, good.
Can I mention about the, the testing also, that as you saw on the CDC and on the public address yesterday evening, the CDC recommends at this point, the testing will be geared towards first responders, police, fire, medical staff, medical support systems first, over the age of 65, so they're going to be earmarked first for the high-risk individuals to keep the system screened. So that will likely be the first step. There will be, from what the CDC had mentioned, there will be 1 million over the next week, testing kits that will be available, I believe they said at 2,000 separate locations. There will be also some in-house testing in some hospitals, so there may be some flexibility also, which may allow for in-house testing of staff and first responders in, in some of the hospitals in the area.
I think that's key, Doc, because it, you know, as you, we have, we have, you know, 30 people each, and, you know, if we, if someone is taken offline due to quarantine, you know, we can quickly get them back online if, if we have the test available. And that was something new yesterday, first responders weren't given priority, but now they are.
It's good. Okay, Carrie?
One quick thing to note, some people have asked about what to do in certain situations like recovery meetings, and I know that there are resources online for those types of meetings to continue happening online, and we can be posting about that as well, because I know that is an important thing we need to make sure people know about.
Good. Okay. Anything else? Okay. If that's it, I think that we would like to let you guys get back to work, this has served its purpose, and I thank everybody for, we thank everybody from the community and the municipality, all the hard work that you're doing, and thank everybody for being here today. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.